So I will call this meeting to order. And I would like us to actually start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I realize that it's a workshop, but it is something that apparently we stopped doing when we were online and we're now no longer online. So I'd like us to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So the, one of the purposes of tonight's meeting was to provide a public information session regarding the marijuana law. It's officially the Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act. And to provide information to the public about, about the law and about what is allowable and not allowable in the village. And so I would like to just share some information about what we have in front of us and to, we have discussed this before, but I think it's an opportunity to continue to share this information so that people are aware of what, of what our options are. So this, the Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act regulates the retail sale of adult-use cannabis, but it's not expected to begin until at the very earliest late 2022. And the things I've seen of late is that that's optimistic. There are a lot of details around the regulations that still need to be worked out. There is a Cannabis Control Board that needs to be populated that I don't believe has, I don't think there's anyone who's been named to that, to that board yet. But just to understand, adult-use cannabis or marijuana is now legal in, in the state of New York. The sale in retail stores is not yet legal. It requires a license from the Cannabis Control Board that is still in formation. And the, the two issues that we have as a village, as a municipality, to discuss and decide is whether or not we want to opt out of allowing retail stores within the confines of the village and all, and/or opting out of onsite consumption sites. So for the retail store, think of it, it's also referred to as a dispensary, and it's similar to a liquor store, if you think about alcohol. And then the onsite consumption sites, sometimes called lounges analogous to bars. And I, I actually looked up, looked up what, what would a lounge possibly look like? And hopefully, hopefully I can get to. And this, I thought, was probably as close as I'm going to get to understanding what a lounge might look like. "Envision this: Own a bar. You own a bar, but the energy is decidedly relaxed, even a bit posh. Instead of throwing back shots, your customers are sharing a vape pen or tasting cannabis confection from a licensed local bakery. There's trivia night going on in one corner, in the same area of the lounge where comedy night was happening last week. Your customers can ask a cannabis aficionado or bud tender about a new type of flower at the counter, or even order a table service, complete with rolling papers, from your pre-reserved booth." That was a description of a lounge that I, because I couldn't quite understand what a cannabis lounge might look like. The laws associated with smoking tobacco products apply also to smoking, to smoking marijuana. So it's not allowed where tobacco smoking is not allowed. But a lounge would be one that would allow smoking within its confines. And so the, the question that we have in front of us is whether or not we want to opt out of allowing either retail establishments or, let's call it a lounge, onsite consumption sites within the confines of the village. Those, if we opted in, we still have the ability to have zoning regulations that would determine where, where they are allowed and other parameters around which could be applied. However, we are not allowed to make it so onerous that it's really effectively not allowing it. And if we are going to opt out, we need to have a local law in place by December 31st. In order to have that law in place, we need to allow for a permissive, a permissive-
Referendum.
Referendum, correct. Thank you. And that requires 30 days, which is why we need, and there are other things that go with enacting a local law that require us to probably make a decision in September in order to have a law in place by the end of December. We can, we can opt out now and choose to opt in later. We would have to pass another local law to opt back in. But if we do not opt out now, we cannot opt out later. If we do nothing, we will be automatically opted in. Couple of other pieces of information. The state prohibits the retail sale or onsite consumption within 500 feet of a school and 200 feet of a house of worship. It's just, it's similar to the alcohol laws. All cannabis sales will be subject to a 4% local sales tax and 1% go, or 25% of that goes to the county and 75% stays with the municipality. That's a little more complex for a village. If the town of Red Hook opts in and the, and the village opts in, then we would, we would split that remaining 75% of the 4% sales tax, local sales tax. And that split would be whatever we agree on with the town. And if we either don't even discuss or can't agree, it'll be split in half. So the, we would get at least 1 and 1/2% of all sales within the village. If the town opts out, then we would get the whole 3%. Let's see, if there's anything else important. I think that covers most of the details. Again, I know we've talked about this before. I'd love to, maybe we ask if, if any of the board has any questions or has an opinion. I know at our last meeting, we had someone share that they were very much in favor of opting in, feeling that it's a business opportunity that, that is something that we should not opt out of. Would love to either hear some deliberation or ask any further questions.
Does the village need to have the zoning in place by the time we decide to opt in?
We would just need to have the zoning in place by the time the Cannabis Control Board was in a position to start issuing licenses. So we, we certainly have, at this point, we have at least a year and a half to work, to work on the zoning.
Okay. Because that takes time too with public hearings and lawyers and county stuff, so.
And there's some discussion as to whether or not a retail establishment for cannabis would fall under a similar definition of a retail sale.
I would imagine would have similar restrictions and regulations that bars and sales of alcohol has in relationships to churches and schools?
Yes, exactly.
And that would be state mandated and not really necessarily a local law?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's also my understanding that if someone is interested in applying for a license, they're also required to notify the local municipality. So this wouldn't suddenly fall in our lap. We would know that someone is applying for a license. And as with a license, alcohol or license, it's not something that's going to happen Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Rumblings, hearings? Have, has anyone had any conversations with people?
I've had a conversation with a few people and mix of ages too. And they were very supportive of the village opting in. In fact, all of them were. And it was a random selection of people and no targets in sight, just basically conversation. And so that was very limited, a number of people, but that was what I heard so far.
Anybody else?
I mean, I had a very similar experience in the, you know, small group-
You probably need to be closer to the mic to be heard.
In the small group of people that I talked to, there was definitely, you know, everyone thought it was much the better idea to opt in with the right kind of, you know, zoning and controls in place.
I had a similar conversation, you know, that people are excited about the idea of opting in. There was also an interesting conversation about equity-wise, who would get those licenses because they're going to be prioritizing people that have been, you know, impacted by the marijuana laws.
You probably also need to be closer to the mic too.
And it was an interesting idea of how maybe Red Hook could be this hub for agriculture for those cities. And that's an opportunity and maybe we shouldn't, you know, turn away from this ability to connect with another, you know, agricultural product that we could make.
Hmm, that's true. The state regulates all the, the growing of the product. At a, at some point, not yet, but at some point, individuals will be able to grow a limited amount of personal. But the state is fully in control of how the, the growing part. The other thing that, they are also limiting licenses, only three licenses to one company or individual. So I think that is one way they're attempting to allow for not just the big companies to take over the whole market. So Greg, I'm going to take the opportunity to ask if anyone has called in with any comments or-
Nobody's called in, but I've-
So you need to talk to you-
Nobody that I can remember called in about it, but I've seen people and talked to them well into their 60s, 70s, and they use it. And if it's not going to be legal here, they're just going to go somewhere where it is legal and get it there anyway.
Well, that's the key. It's legal now in the state of New York. That's not our discussion. And so they're gonna, and, and you, I believe you'll be able to mail order, so it will be delivered to your house if you choose to do, if that's allowed. So we are not talking about whether or not we allow it in the village. It's whether or not we have an establishment that sells it. So to your point, they'll buy it somewhere. And so we could potentially benefit from the sales. Well, we would benefit from the sales. The other is the revenue from the sales tax is, there's no restriction on how we spend it, which, which is, makes it easier to incorporate and for us to think about how we might spend that additional revenue. And, and I do know that there is, there are questions around how do we determine if someone is under the influence? And that is, I think that's probably the, the one outstanding piece. There are, oh, and I meant to bring my little piece of paper. It's called a, there, there is a training program that police officers can go through where they are trained to recognize if someone is under the influence. And there are a number of them in, in Dutchess County. And when needed, they are called upon to come and determine if someone is under the influence. And so until there's a more immediate test, like a breathalyzer, the difficulty with marijuana is it can stay in your system long past its ability to impair you. It's been known to stay in systems for three to four weeks. And, and so that makes it tricky. Just a blood test really doesn't indicate whether or not you're under the influence. But I did have a conversation with Sergeant Hildenbrand, and he did not have any specific objection to, to the retail establishments and the onsite consumption. Probably a little more concerned about that, only because similar to a bar, you want to make sure that people aren't leaving it to then operate a vehicle. And so I think that's something that we might think about in terms of making sure that there are, that there's transportation to help people get, get back home without having to operate their, their cars and supporting designated drivers.
And again, we don't know from the state what they're going to be doing with the Cannabis Control Board, but similar to bars, I think it's the bud tender's responsibility to kind of keep an eye on his patrons.
Yes, I, I fully expect that they'll, it'll be similar. The hardest part is because there isn't an equivalent breathalyzer. It won't be exactly the same, but I, I expect they'll model it very similarly. And people are more likely to be aggressive having been drinking alcohol than they are consuming cannabis. One thing Sergeant Hildenbrand did say that he, he has never had an aggressive encounter with someone who has been under the influence of cannabis. Any, well, any other comments or questions, issues, concerns regarding the? All right, seeing, seeing none. I want to, I want to thank the board for continuing the conversation. And I want to thank Panda for being here to record this conversation because I think it's an important way for people to hear, to have the opportunity to understand. It's a little bit complicated. And I just want to make sure that we do everything we can to communicate. And I will encourage all of us to remind people that there is further, a further opportunity for comment on September 13th? I think it's the 13th is the, the second Monday in September. When, when we have our regular board meeting, we will start with public commentary and information regarding this so that we can get as much information as we can, much commentary from, from the public. Okay. Then the, another item for our discussion is, is the LED lights, light purchase program. And Charlie, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have you explain it again as though I don't know it because I'm not sure I fully understand. This is a program that's, that the village has been talking about for a while. I, I will acknowledge it's a little awkward, it's a little less workshop-like doing this with microphones, but let's take the opportunity to share the information since we have Panda here so that people can hear and understand and reference back to.
Sure. Yeah, no, that's a good idea. It's a, it's a project that we've been working on for some time. Basically, it's a, it's a state-sponsored program through NIPA, the New York Power Authority, which gives municipal communities the ability to acquire and maintain their streetlights, which otherwise and currently for us are being, are owned and maintained by Central Hudson. And part of the, the project, which is the energy efficiency and, you know, green part of it, is that as part of the switchover, we switch from, from a mixture of, of sodium and non-LED lighting to pure LED lighting, which has a huge energy efficiency component to it. And with the modern LED lights, you can, you can adjust them, you can have the same streetlighting experience pretty much as with conventional sodium and other types of lighting. So the upshot is, is that we recognize this as a, an opportunity both to be more efficient and to save money. Because currently, we rent our streetlight fixtures from Central Hudson. And for a small budgeted municipality like we are, that annual rental fee is, is considerable. So we reckon, and the prior mayor, Ed Blondell, you know, ran the numbers, he loved to run numbers, had multiple spreadsheets on the issue, and costed out the sort of cost of buying out Central Hudson against the savings over, you know, a number of years and reckoned that we could break even after four years. And after that, we'd be saving, saving considerable money every year, plus we would have a lower energy bill and all kinds of good things would come of it. But it's a complicated project. There are other communities involved. NIPA has, it took them a while to sort of line up a maintenance contractor for municipal light systems. And, but we, we are finally, I think, at a point where we are able to move forward. We need to pin down basically the finances and the financing of the system. The cost to buy out Central Hudson has increased considerably since we started the conversation. And we started that conversation, I think, four or more years ago. So we, we do need to go back over the numbers. I'm sure it will still make fiscal sense to do it, and it's a logical thing to do for energy efficiency reasons. And we're actually so far into the project that I think we would incur penalties if we backed out at this point anyway. But it's the right thing to do.
Are there grants available, Charlie?
As I understand it from, from talking, you know, from working with Ed on the project, it looked like that the best way to go about the financing piece was to basically bond it through NIPA. NIPA would have a financing option that would mean, you know, our costs for the first few years would be similar to what we are paying for rental fees to Central Hudson right now. And then, so they would be able to structure it so that we would not be, you know, paying more upfront. And that would extend the sort of pay-down period a little bit, but it would still, you know, mean that we could enter into the project without any extra expenses to the village. Ed was more on the details than I am, but that was the crux of it.
And so what, I don't remember at this point. What is the current cost to buy out?
That very recent quote that we got from Central Hudson was for $141,000 and change. I looked back in my files and in an early spreadsheet that Ed put together, which, like I said, was probably a few years ago now, that fixture buyback was 77,000 bucks.
And what's happened in the, in the interim is Central Hudson has replaced all the, all the lights for LEDs, right? So they've already-
Not all of them. Not all of them. But they have been aggressively replacing the lights with LEDs. So that's why, a big reason of why the cost has gone up.
And if we were to, if we were to buy, buy out Central Hudson, would they, are they the ones who would continue to do the replacement? Or does that then become our responsibility?
No, that then becomes our responsibility through the maintenance contract with NIPA. And they're, the contractor that they have selected to do that, maintenance and repair and replacement.
Okay, so NIPA has a, has a selected preferred contractor?
Yes. There's a substantial agreement that we need to sign on to for that part of it.
And so the process, if, we would need to complete the buyout. And so the payback to NIPA of the bond, it would be the cost roughly that we're spending now for the rental?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the biggest part of the costs. I mean, there are other costs that are, remain the same or similar. But yeah, I mean, we should talk through these spreadsheets and update them and look at them with the new numbers. It's just a question of, I think, a slight extension in the amount of time it will take to basically pay back the, the cost, the initial upfront cost and then-
And would the, because the, the expenses that we would then incur would be the paying off the bond of the buyback, but then we'd also have to pay the contractor to do the work.
There is an annual fee for, for the, basically the maintenance agreement. And there are other ongoing fees. What, I mean, I know it sounds, it's sort of on the face of it, you know, 77,000 dollars versus 141, sounds like a doubling. It's not actually that bad because in addition to the 77,000 dollars, Ed had spected out about 35,000 dollars for purchasing new fixtures and then 6,300 dollars for purchasing new photocells and then 24,000 dollars for new fixture installation. Those numbers would go down because Central Hudson has done a lot of replacement already.
Got it.
So it's not as bad as it seems on first glance.
How much do we spend in the annual rental now?
Uh, you know, unfortunately, the damn spreadsheet didn't print out properly.
Oh, no.
But I, I thought it was something like 40,000 dollars a year. That may be a little high. Brent's the man with the numbers at his fingertips.
I don't remember what we're paying because we pay, you know, for the streetlights, we also pay for our lights in Abraham's, Abraham's, Abrams Park.
Right, which were our lights.
And the parking lot as well.
It's, it was, it's a considerable sum. I was looking at the last budget I have, but it was not 100% clear to me.
Yeah, the Central Hudson, I think it's under the building, 1640. There's, there's streetlights and there's one for the parks, which is probably in eight, 800, 600 range around there somewhere.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a little bit of background work to work out and get the numbers all so that we all understand, you know. And so Charlie, perhaps you and I can set up a meeting where we pull out the numbers and get, 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 get the details and clarify.
We can update Ed's spreadsheets so that they reflect the new numbers.
Right. And then, and then we can, we can, we should be able to do that by the September meeting.
Yep.
Great. It sounds like something that it, we either, it's a fish or cut bait. It's time. We either need to proceed or, or truly-
Right.
Stop talking about it.
And I, and I think there's, yeah, we just need to update all our numbers, but I, I'm sure that it will still make sense to move forward with this. I'm looking here at the budget and it says street lighting for the fiscal year June 21 to May 22, we have 55,000 dollars. And I, I think the largest part of that is that rental expense.
Okay.
How often, do we know how often they are replaced? You know, once you own a pole, like how often do they have to be?
Well, I think, I mean, ordinarily, if you're not talking about replacing sodium with LED, you know, it's on a, we, we get notified, we let them know Central Hudson comes out and replaces. But they've been, like I said, they've been aggressively replacing the sodium lighting.
But in LED, is your question about how long, how, the sort of the life cycle of an LED light, is that your question?
That's a good question. Can we just answer that question that you didn't ask because it's a lot longer? Yeah. I mean, the other, the other good thing about switching to LEDs is that they shouldn't need to be replaced anywhere near the frequency of the sodium lights.
So yeah, so the, when we're talking about the fixture, we're talking about the fixture and the post itself. And the post is it-
Not the post.
Not the post.
No, the post, Central Hudson still owns the pole.
Got it.
We're talking about, oh-
Just the fixture.
There's a special word for that arm that comes out and holds the light.
Okay, that makes more sense because I was just thinking about if we were having to replace all those poles.
No, we will own the fixture and the arm on-
Arm, got it.
No, we will own the fixture and the arm on Central Hudson's pole.
Got it.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's just the innards and the connection and the bulb that needs to be changed. Do you, Charlie, do you know how, like, are we talking years for an LED bulb? Are we talking one year, two years, or three months? Years. And a non LED bulb? Half the time?
Do we get a choice on like the lumen output? So we can control the color range, or?
I believe we can. I mean, you can get very fancy and get into the weeds on, you know, high-tech lighting systems that we can control from our phones. And they have, I mean, basically, you have smart lighting, and the lights sort of dim at certain hours of the day. Not sure how fancy we're going to get, but these are all options that are out there.
Well, and most of, most of the lights have been changed. There aren't that many left to do, correct?
Right.
So whatever it is that they've already done, but we can certainly ask that question of Central Hudson, of what do we have and what flexibility do we have?
That breakdown and that cost from them includes a breakdown of the entire light inventory and what's there.
Okay.
And just to remind me again, Charlie, how many municipalities in this consortium?
The town of Red Hook is, I mean, they have signed up, and I think they're fully engaged. I don't know if they've completed the entire process yet, but there's four or five communities in Northern Dutchess and across the river in Ulster, I do believe, possibly more. I mean, I'm coming back to this after having a little time not focusing on it very much at all. But they've, I mean, the communities in our area have been moving ahead. So it also makes it easier for us to sort of check in with the town and see, you know, what they've, how they've worked out the transition and how things are going.
Yeah, it sounds like we can look up who's in the-
Yep.
So it was a consortium of municipalities that had an agreement with NIPA?
Yes, NIPA really needed a number of local municipalities to sign up in order to make it worthwhile.
Gotcha.
Particularly with regards to, you know, maintenance and replacement and repair. So they do have that. And I think the expectation is that more communities will sign up as time goes by.
Gotcha, okay. So it sounds like we will do, we'll take a look at who's in that consortium and reach out to at least a couple of them, a couple, a few of them, and just ask how it went or how it's going. I think that's worth doing as well.
I know, I mean, one of the reasons why we sort of dragged our feet a little bit was Ed was a little concerned. I mean, he didn't get information on the stewardship contract, on the maintenance contract.
Okay.
And he wanted to make sure that that was, you know, solid and gave us what we needed before he signed the village up for anything.
Which is wise.
Makes sense, very wise.
Absolutely. Okay, any other questions or items? One other thing I did want to talk about was hardscrabble. The hardscrabble committee that was appointed in April is actually not the hardscrabble committee that is working on the, on hardscrabble day. And Mel Corca, I managed to leave my piece of paper upstairs as to who's on the committee. So I would like to, as an order of business, formally appoint the actual members of the hardscrabble committee. And Mel Corca is the leader of this committee. And I wholeheartedly thank you for your efforts and energy that you're putting into this. It's not easy to take over an established event that, where the planning time was cut in less than a half. And we don't have all of the information of what we've done before, but last year, we didn't do it in the same way at all. And so it's really kind of like creating it new. So first of all, thank you very much. But Mel Corca is on that committee. We have Amy Smith. We have Dawn, whose last name I was going to look up. Jardine, thank you very much. We have Corinne Molinaro. And we have Sarah Ugolini. And I know, and we have Lori Husted.
And Mo Blackmore.
Mo Blackmore.
And then Jeffrey Walsh.
And Jeffrey Walsh. All right, am I, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Does that sound right?
I think that's the main-
That's the core group.
Yes.
There are others who are helping out.
Yeah, Kim McGrath as well is on the committee, sorry. And of course, Will Noonan is-
Oh, yes, 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 of course.
I don't mean to.
Thank you.
Forget Will.
This was a test. Great, so what I would like to do is to formally appoint, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, these 10 people to the hardscrabble committee. If I can move, I'll make a motion to, I forget how this works. I'm appointing, you all need to accept the appointment. So I think I need a motion from you all to accept the appointment.
I can make a motion that we accept the mayor's appointments to the hardscrabble committee. And a second, I guess, would be in order.
I'll second that.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Super. Thank you. And it's probably an amended appointment. I don't know what it's called. Let's just say an appointment. And just to that end, the hardscrabble committee, well, Mel Corca, why don't you give us an update on where we are with hardscrabble? And we can also talk about our discussion this morning of hoping everything stays as roughly is, but also, we are mindful that the pandemic is not gone. And we have checkpoints to determine what we're doing and how we're doing it to make sure that we have an event that is mindful of the health of our community.
Yeah, we were going over the mask and social distancing policy. Sorry, am I not close enough? We're going over the mask and social distancing policy. Also, cancellation, should we need to cancel? Also, the milestones that we will actually check in and make sure that we still feel comfortable and we still feel like it's the right choice moving forward.
But maybe lay out what hardscrabble is looking like right now.
It's exciting. It's, we're doing more of a, because it can't be as big as it's always been, we're doing more of a local focus. So we've been getting a lot of local nonprofits to have booths. So that's very exciting. We are also getting quite a few local and regional bands. And we're in contract talks right now. So as soon as those are assigned, we are going to announce, which is another exciting milestone. We are also doing a parade, which will be great. The theme of the parade and of the day is apples. And we're going to be celebrating all our apple orchard families. So we're getting a lot of the different families that have owned orchards in Red Hook to be riding cars. And we think that's going to be a lot of fun. We're also making a bunch of papier-mache apples for all the different nursery schools and art rooms to decorate so that they can also be in the parade. And am I missing anything else?
I think we have, don't we have the Desert Storm Motorcycle Group who's going to be in the parade, which is exciting?
Yes, the same, on the same day, VFW is actually doing a fundraiser for a community member that has cancer. So they are going to be doing a poker run. And those, what are they, peacekeepers, are going to be, give a couple of their motorcycles to ride in the parade, which will be fun for all the kids, I'm sure. We're going to have a touch truck from, we're going to have a fire truck out by Key Bank. There's going to be lots of kid scrabble events. We're going to try to up all the different kid activities because we know kids definitely need a little more fun after this long year. And, yeah, I don't think I'm selling it as much as, as I'm excited about it, but we are making progress.
Yeah, I think that kid and family-friendly, I think, is the idea for the first half up to and through the parade. The police department is also going to be doing a booth. They're hoping to be out front of Village Hall. I don't know if you all know that, but that's what they're hoping.
Wonderful.
And, but then also, well, throughout the day, there'll be vendors and some food trucks. And then in the evening, there will be cider tent, hard cider tent, highlighting local ciders and our local breweries, which I think is great. I think that'll be a fun addition to the, to the day. And there's still plenty of opportunity for sponsorship, if anyone is interested. And there is a website. It's hardscrableday.org.
Yes.
With a lot of information on it. So we highly encourage people to take a look at the website if they want more information. And, but I'm excited, I'm certainly hoping that, you know, if we're able to stay kind of where we are, the fact that most of it's outside. I do love the phrase "mask friendly." So where appropriate, people will be asked to wear a mask. And I think that's, that's going to be the right thing to do. But it's also outside, which I think will limit the, limit the risks. It's certainly our, our hope and intention.
Are the churches participating, Mel Corca?
I have been in talks with the Episcopal Church. We still have to get ahold of the Catholic Church. They just got a new priest. But that's actually my husband's priest from Rhinebeck. So we have to reach out to him. And I'm not sure about the Lutheran church. Do you know if they're doing anything?
I mean, they typically do a pig roast, I think, don't they? It's a big fundraiser for, with their own vendors, but I don't know.
I think it's a hard year for volunteers, for people. So I think there's some people are having a hard time finding staff because people are nervous, you know, about the normal volunteer pool. But I hope that they are. And I should double check that they know about the date and everything.
I do know that St. Paul's Lutheran Church, they have, they will be doing a raffle. They've actually been advertising a raffle that they'll be drawing on that day. So I don't know what activities they're doing, but I know that they're very aware. But that sounds like a good follow-up, is to, is to reach out just to make sure that, that everyone knows and can do what they can. But yeah, actually, the volunteer question with Historic Red Hook, for example, has indicated that they just don't have the volunteer pool, and so they're not able to do what they would like to do for programming, so.
They usually have pie à la mode, apple pie, volunteers bake pies and-
And apple bobbing, which would not be a good thing this year, but.
Yeah, unfortunately, they-
Apple pies are something I look forward to every year.
I know. Sounds good. But yeah, and obviously, the committee will take any and all help and suggestions and-
And any Volunteers' Day of are welcome. We got a T-shirt, so.
It's, it's a tough year, and we're, for a whole lot of reasons. And so we're really hoping that we're able to create a community event where we just remember that we're part of a community and get to have some fun and be together as a community and support our local businesses and our local musicians. And I really like the local focus and our, well, another exciting thing that you didn't mention, who's our, who are our, who are we highlighting in the parade?
Oh, that's all the orchard families.
Yes, which is great.
They're all going to get their own cars and banners and different, that'll be fun. We had a meeting with the different farmers, and it was really fun, listening to the history. And when they came and how long they've had their orchards and all the different varieties they grow, and that was really great, so.
Yeah, neat stuff. Okay, those were the items that I had on my list. Does anybody else have?
You can do contracts, please, contract, a union.
I, I wasn't going to do that tonight. I was going to do that in September, at the September meeting. I can say that we are right at the end of the union negotiations for the police and the highway. And we will be in a position to be, I will be in a position to be presenting both of those contracts at the September meeting for ratification. So that's, that's something exciting for me, since I arrived mid-negotiation. And I think we have, we've come to positive terms that I think is both fair to the workers and also fiscally responsible for the village. So feeling good about where we ended up on those. So there'll be more specific information that I'll share in September, and we'll have a vote on that at that time. And anything else that, I want to thank you guys. What's interesting is I realize that I think it's this Saturday that will be my, the end of my third month being mayor, and-
First quarter.
First quarter, exactly. So I, I may write up a little, this is what I've been doing for the first three months of my, of my position as mayor.
You still have all your hair, so that's-
I still have all my hair, and it's not, as far as you know, it's not, it's not, there's not a lot of gray, so. And I will also take the opportunity to say thank you to Greg. I was in the office yesterday when Greg took a couple of phone calls from some folks on Fisk Street. Our highway department was replacing a valve that was leaking. And it's disruptive. And I'm sure that the conversation did not, didn't start out peacefully. And Greg handled it beautifully and was very respectful and very gracious in the way he handled, handled the phone calls, so.
Thank you.
Just a thank you to Greg for, and I also sat in for him for two hours this afternoon, so I have a better understanding of, you know, for half hour, nothing happens. And then all of a sudden, there's someone at the door, there's someone on the phone, there's someone who comes in the office. And so it's, and then they want garbage tags, but then it's, it's, there's a lot going on. So I just want to, want to say thank you to Greg. And, you know, all the employees are working hard for the village, and I'm very grateful for that. And I'm happy to be in a position to be able to see how much good work is being done. And, I might add, my deputy mayor probably knows more about this village than anyone. And very grateful for, for you sharing as much information and stories and help and all that you've done and have been doing for the village. So it's, it always amazes me, the more I learn, the more I realize how many people have done so many things, so. And thank you to the board members. And I look forward to formally seeing you in September. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this, it needs a meeting.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we are adjourned. Thank you very much.